Big text. Hey Melody, this is Commissioner Hanson. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. I'd like to welcome you all as guests this evening to our Planning Commission meeting for January 17th, 2024. My name is Jason Hanson. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Commission. I've been here for about five years or so. Again, welcome you all. Welcome to the City Council. I saw here this evening at least one of the members in attendance and the officer in the back. Thank you for coming. It's the first time. I don't know if we've met you. They brought the big muscle tonight, I guess. Yeah, alright. Yeah. This evening, what we're gonna do is we're gonna start with an invocation offered by Commissioner Mitchell and then we will, those of you that like to, we'll join the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll go ahead and lead that at that time. Dear heavenly Father, we're grateful to be gathered this evening. We're thankful for the circumstance that we're able to gather. We're grateful that we can live in this wonderful city. We're thankful for all those who work diligently to just strive to help us to improve and to enjoy the area that we live. We pray at this time, as we begin our meeting, that that would be with each of us, that we can handle the projects that are before us in a civilized manner and we're grateful again for all that we have and this we pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Amen. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright Commissioners, the first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda as set and sent to us. If there's any changes that need to be mentioned or suggested, please do so at this time. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
This Commissioner, will I make a motion to approve the agenda as ordered?
This Jill, I second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is set as is. Second item on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes from our previous meeting that took place on January 3rd, 2024. You've all received a copy of those minutes. If there are any corrections or adjustments that need to be made, please let Melody know at this time. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve those minutes from January 3rd, 2024.
This Commissioner Tupow, I move to approve the minutes from January 3rd, 2024.
Commissioner, this is Commissioner Mitchell and I second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the minutes are now part of a public record on file and they are approved. The third item on our agenda is, this is the opportunity for a declaration of abstention or conflict. For those of you in attendance this evening, this is the opportunity for each of the Commissioners to state if they have a financial interest in any of the items that have come before us this evening. Tonight's agenda, I do not have any issues.
I do not.
Okay. We'll go and jump right into our first item this evening. This is a zone change. It's a public hearing and consideration to approve an ordinance for zone change request Z-23-15 to approve the design and use of an already zoned planned unit development commercial located at approximately Washington Fields Road and George Washington Boulevard. The applicant is Sam Patel and Rosenberg and Associates and I'll turn the time over to staff for their report.
Thank you Commissioners. I just want to reiterate that this property is already zoned. We're just doing the design and use. So these zoning is in place. We're just looking at the layout here that we'll get into. The request is for specific site design and use of an already zoned PUDC property. The surrounding zoning is R115 to the north and west and agricultural 20 to the east and south. The proposed request is for the purpose of developing the acreage into a commercial development as shown in the attached exhibits. Staff is very pleased with and supports the proposed design and use application. As shown in the exhibits, the project consists of a convenience store with six covered gas pump bays, a retail store, a drive-through car wash with covered vacuums, two retail office buildings, two quick serve restaurants with drive-through access, a restaurant, a bank with drive-through, and lastly, a retail restaurant building. The bank in the north, two-story retail office buildings are a proposed 41 feet tall. The retail office building that is to the south is a proposed 38 feet 6 inches tall. The proposed car wash is 32 feet 7 inches. All other buildings are 27 feet tall or less. As shown on the digital material board, the building materials include dry stacked rock in a blonde sandstone color, engineered wood siding in a Hawaiian charcoal color, Navajo white stucco, and standing sea metal roofing in a charcoal color. These exterior finishes are attractive and well-designed. The landscaping is inviting and provides walkability with the trail system on the east and south boundary lines. Parking for the proposal requires 205 parking stalls. The applicant is providing 212 parking stalls, broken down as follows. 55 parking spaces for the 8,200 square feet of restaurant. 140 parking spaces for the 34,780 square feet of retail/office space and 10 parking spaces for the employees of the car wash. The applicant is providing an excess of seven parking spaces. The proposal includes two monument signs located at the entrances into the service station off of George Washington Boulevard and Washington Fields Road. As shown in the exhibits, these monument signs are 11 feet 5 inches tall and 15 feet wide. There is also a low-profile subdivision sign on the corner of George Washington Boulevard and Washington Fields Road. This sign is 34 feet 8 inches long and 6 feet 5 inches tall. The applicant has identified Phase 1 to include improvements along their boundary and adjacent to George Washington Boulevard and Washington Fields Road. These Phase 1 improvements include curb and gutter, asphalt pavement and associated striping, 10-foot asphalt trail, street-side landscaping installed up to the building setbacks. Phase 1 improvements will also include the detention basin and its associated landscaping and a 6-foot block wall along the west property line. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of Z-23-15 for the design and use of an already zoned PUDC parcel onto the City Council based on the following findings and conditions as seen in your report and I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions you may have.
Thanks Eldon. Commissioners, I'll open the floor for any questions.
This Jill, are the access points full access? Are they, are they right and left or what are they?
There's a mixture of both. Drew can pull up that site plan. So the two, two closest to the intersection are a right in, right out. And then the two further are full, full movements. Which meet our, our roadway guidelines.
Yeah.
Access management plan. There we go.
When you said the, they're going Phase 1, is that, is it, so it'll take up Washington, they'll do the improvements on George Washington Boulevard and then on Washington Fields Road all the way to the end of the project or just to where Phase 1 stops?
Phase, Phase 1 will include all of their boundary lines.
Okay.
To the north, all the way up to their property line.
So the, the Fields Road and George Washington Boulevard will be built out all the way with Phase 1?
Correct.
Okay. That's, that was what I wanted to make sure of.
For those in attendance, just as a matter of record, we saw this project a long time ago when it was zoned agricultural, I believe, and it, we changed the zoning on this, I'd say at least a year or two ago. We've seen this project a couple of times and this has came to us slated as a PUD, it's called, stands for Planned Unit Development, which is a zoning that allows us as Planning Commissioners to see the concept of what they would like to bring and build as opposed to just straight zoning something. They say, we're gonna build some buildings and you don't actually get to see the buildings. So the city's been proactively, at least it seems, I don't know if it's actually written down somewhere, but they certainly have started to bring to us more projects like this, which I as a Commissioner appreciate because we can visually see what's going to be built on the property as opposed to wondering what the buildings might look like and being stuck with it once they're there. And in that respect, the city has hired some consultants to work with developers to develop some sort of a cohesion with the types of projects that are being built in the fields. And we saw the first project, which is called The Junction, it's being built right now and that is over kind of by the, I guess not everybody would know the Hoops, but Freedom Village, yeah. The Freedom Village over in Washington Fields, kind of on the way, the back way to Crimson High School. There's a development there on the corner. It'll be the first piece of commercial out there in that area and this will be the second one that we're seeing and I wanted to commend the developer for the look of this. I have no idea what the relationship was like in working with the staff on this and the, the architects that were brought in to, I call them Will and Bill, that's their names, they're from back east, but when I saw this project and I see it now from where we started with it, I, I think it, personally, I think it's a grand slam. I really look forward to seeing it built. I live in the area. I really like the look of it. And so we've seen this multiple times. This isn't the first time that we've seen this as a Planning Commission tonight, so I just wanted to throw that out there so people understand why we may not have a lot of questions because we've had them answered. So that's, Staff, or Commissioners, do you have any additional questions or initial questions, I should say, for staff before we open it up to a public hearing?
I do not. It's a beautiful project.
So, this is a public hearing. Like I said, I've been doing this probably for five years and probably four years ago, one of the public hearings got a little hairy and we've had a police officer in the back ever since then. So recently, there was another public hearing that didn't sit too well with me and I wanted to say something about that tonight. As, as I sit up here and I lead the public hearings, we're a Planning Commission Board that's appointed by the City Council. We're not elected. We didn't run for this position. Based on an area of expertise that we have in our private lives, they asked us or appointed us to be up here and our job is maybe a little bit different than what you might think. Sometimes people come to a public hearing and they want to get everybody riled up and they want to come and tell the city how bad of a job they're doing or whatever it might be. That's not our job. Our, our job is to look at development that comes to the city and make sure that it follows the guidelines of zoning standards that we have in the city. So when somebody has a piece of land, it's architecture, I'm sorry, that's agricultural and they want to build houses on it and the demand of houses that are coming here, we approve those types of things. If we don't, it opens up a whole can of worms of where that goes legally in some projects and that's a whole nother discussion for another day, but I was thinking over this past week about what it'd be like if you went to sell your home and the city stepped in and said, yeah, you can't sell that. Every single one of us would be up in arms trying to figure out why we couldn't sell our house. Sometimes a lot of members of the public come and they see something that's gonna be built and they just don't want it there. And from a 10,000-foot level, that's not how it works. People have the right legally in every aspect to build on their property and to improve their property and if improving means to build houses that allow this opportunity, this, this area an opportunity to grow, then the city's gonna allow that to happen. There is not a moratorium on building in the city. We're not trying to stop the growth. In some regards, we need and welcome the growth because there are taxes that are paid to help pay for the things that we have. So, not everybody always likes the projects that come and in a previous meeting, we had some peoples that came and wanted to argue and wanted to fight and that's not what this meeting's for. I'm a pretty reasonable guy and I think I'm a nice guy, but that one got under my skin a little bit and I don't ever want to have that happen again, so I'm gonna say it upfront. If you're here to argue or here to come up here and, and complain and be upset, there's, this is not the right meeting to do that and I'll cut you off and we'll have the officer escort you out. But I'm also at the same time, more than happy to invite all of you that have a, a comment on this particular item to come up and get your name on the record and everything goes to City Council where they read, they watch all this. By the way, we have council members here in attendance this evening. They also watch the, this online and in their meeting, they're the ones that decide whether or not this goes forward. All we do is we recommend to them whether or not we think, or we recommend or deny the project based on its following of the zoning laws in the city. So, I love listening to the public. We'll answer your questions if we can. We might not know the answer, but I'll, we'll do everything we can to figure it out. We're not here just to shut you down and say no, but we're also not here to have somebody come up and be completely disrespectful. So, I welcome everybody's comments though. I just wanted to say that and I think I'll probably say that at every public hearing that we have because the public is, just remember that this is a Planning Commission meeting where the public is an invited guest and I would never let an invited guest come into my house and yell at me and say things and then just think that that's okay. So, I'm happy to listen to your comments and I, I welcome them because the fields is an important area of development and this is one of the first commercial projects out there. This is the second one and that's a big deal. Actually, I think this is the third one technically. So, looking forward to it. Sorry, that's kind of a tangent, but I wanted to say that because I walked in here tonight and I was just like, I don't want to have that ever happen again. So, I appreciate you all that you're here and I don't want you to feel intimidated by any stretch. If you want to say something, please state your name for the record when you come up here. Melody is in the other room taking notes and that's important to get it on the record because it goes to City Council and that's where they're gonna read and see what you said. So if anybody'd like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name and we'll go from there.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to come and address our, our zoning meeting people here. I just would-
We gotta say your name first.
Oh, sorry. Brian Baker.
Thanks Brian.
Yeah. I live in Stamsen Estates, which is about 300 yards from this development. Sorry. Um, I so appreciate the fact that all of you are willing to give of your time to help us with, you know, the needs of the community. In my view, one of the things that is most important about the tasks of a planning zoning group would be to help the community maintain quality of life issues. I think that's very important. I recognize that each individual has a right to be able to improve and enjoy their properties within the confines of what's allowed within the community. So, as private, my, I'm here with my wife Liz Baker, by the way. As private homeowners within 300 yards of this property, we oppose the plans to change this green space into a high-traffic retail and commercial trades business, so close to our residential homes in Stamsen Estates and the adjacent single-family homes neighborhoods. The proposed additions of these 11 various businesses and offices, some of which are going to be two-story buildings, will only exacerbate what is becoming a high-traffic corridor of Washington County. The upshot being higher noise, traffic, pollution, and likely increased collisions and injuries. The intersection of Washington Fields Road and George Washington Boulevard is not currently as capable as it should be of safely processing the already high volume of Class 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7-sized trucks and trailers that traverse these roads. I'm speaking primarily of the Washington Fields Road. Hundreds of cement trucks, belly dump, double tractor trailers, contractors hauling various construction equipment. This coupled with the events traffic from Staley Farms, which frequently bags up the north-south travel significantly on this two-lane road, is, is a concern. The road already processes volumes of traffic that would be handled much better on a four-lane road. Adding businesses that add to the choke points at this intersection will have a greater likelihood of compromising public safety and increasing noise and air pollution. However, just making it all four-lane road really doesn't address the underlying issues of replacing so much green space with business. Green space is becoming more and more scarce and precious in our city. You don't have to look very far to see that's happening. Its loss increases congestion, heat from added pavement, pollution, and noise in residential areas. St. George News is also reporting plans to significantly increase the air traffic to the airport across the land corridor, which is already inundated with traffic. We would just ask you as stewards of our public good to, now and in the future, begin to more strongly consider how all this growth can and will impact and diminish the high quality of life that we as Washington residents have enjoyed for decades. Please consider initiatives that mitigate or divert the effects of increasing traffic, both air and surface in our community. We also earnestly request that higher priority be given to offsetting growth and urban sprawl via, via the higher initiation and preservation of significant green spaces such as parks and natural corridors. And I realize that's not something this, this committee takes care of, but I'm speaking to the city leadership in general. And we would ask you to consider what little bit of tax revenue is gonna be added for what a large amount of impact I perceive that this project may, may bring to our community. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Hey Brian, before you leave there, sometimes I'll ask people that come up, what is it they would like to see there? If it wasn't this, what would you like to see there as a surrounding resident? I know you kind of mentioned some greens, open space and things like that.
Well, I think we are looking to see more park spaces for sure. The trail spaces are wonderful around the river, no, no question, but we'd like to see probably a little more green spaces dedicated within the residential parts of our community.
Okay. Perfect. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a wonderful example of a very well-thought-out and respectable public comment that we're happy to put on the record for City Council to take a look at. Come on.
I'd, I'd like to just make a comment though. Before our time, and it, it's happened a long time ago, this, this is general planned commercial, so it is what it is. So.
Let me take a second just to explain that. Every few, every, I don't know, I think, when was the last one done? Six years ago Drew, I think? The last general plan update?
So, six years ago.
We'll, we'll just say six for the ease of conversation. Every six or so years, the city will sit down and come up with a general plan. Sorry to make you stand there, but they'll come up with a general idea of what they want from a 10,000-foot level, looking down on the city. They like to have commercial here. They like to have residential here. They like to have industrial here, you know, whatever it might be in the city. This is a map of, of, that came, that came out of six years ago from the city's discussion of what they would like for this area to be and that red is commercial. So we're dealing with the one piece tonight that is on the left upper, yeah, where the arrow is bouncing back and forth is the piece that we're seeing tonight. So just as an FYI, that's something that was put as commercial from a higher level six years ago. The city wants that, knowing that this would be an important intersection in the future, so.
And Chairman, if I may just add to your FYI, the discussions six years were multiple public hearings at the Planning Commission and the City Council. Input from the landowners as well as input from the public. Those public hearings included mailers and notices and so it, it wasn't just the City Council that sat, sat up here and said, hey, we want that to be read. It was the City Council that said, hey, we're willing to consider this. What do people want? What do the landowners want and what, what appears to work for our city's future? Now, we're now six years later, maybe that's not, maybe that's not the direction of the future, but, but that's where this came from, was a pretty long, arduous process, a lot like tonight.
Well, my name's Liz Baker. That was, my name's Liz Baker. That was my husband and I would just like to add to his comments. Had we known that that was zoned commercial, we would not have spent $2 million on a home that's a stone's throw from that. And six years ago, I don't think that there was a subdivision there at all, but now that there is a subdivision there with high-end homes, I res, I respectfully say, you know, that I pay property taxes and I feel like there should be some consideration for the homeowners that are close around that. We came from Draper, Utah. Draper has made it a big priority to put parks throughout the city so that the residents can have someplace to enjoy the outdoors. It gets very hot here, being close to the pavement. You can feel the difference in temperature. And I don't see Washington City putting in as many parks as I have seen in St. George and I think that that needs to be a real consideration. Six years ago, that was all farmland and I'm sure nobody thought that they would be living close to that or cared, but now that I have a $2 million home with, in such close proximity, I don't appreciate this development. I don't appreciate doing this and we have no parks anywhere close to us. The closest one is the Sullivan Park and the, the trails are busy there, but the point is, is that if you go over there to enjoy green space, the green space for most of the year is, got big signs on it that says, don't walk on the grass. It's, it's needing to rejuvenate and you can walk on the grass in the spring and summer. Well, if you go over there in the spring and summer, it is packed with soccer tournaments. It's a soccer park, but there's very little place for residents to enjoy the green space and I don't, I don't mind the soccer park. I think it's great for the kids. I know it brings a lot of people in from out of town and it helps to support the hotels and motels that are around, but it does not give a lot of consideration to the residents.
Drew, can you scroll out and point out where Treasure Valley Park is? I think that that's much closer to her home and has a lot of green space. There's also a lot of grass areas around the high school that get used heavily by the neighbors there. And then maybe also point out for her where the 15-acre park's gonna be. It's been announced already just nearby her, to the east.
Well, I'm most, I'm most concerned about the traffic, the pavement, the noise and the-
You just, you just talked for a few minutes about green space and I just wanted to let it be known. There's a lot of green space around you there and more, more, more is coming.
I'm, I'm aware of what's at the school, but the schools use those areas and that's not really a place for residents to go over and utilize.
Are you aware of Treasure Valley Park? I just wanted to show you that because that's much closer to you than Sullivan. No, it's, Treasure Valley is just a park that's been there for 10-plus years. It was there before she moved in. That gets heavily used right there by the neighborhood. That's a city park that's much closer to you than Sullivan.
Yes, well.
And then, let's show her where the new park-
I'm saying, I think you need more city parks.
We agree.
As it, as it fills up and becomes more developed, there's no place for residents to go.
So see the map there. This is a 15-acre park that's been announced and is in the process of being developed. Again, that's just, not even a half a mile away from you also. And so the City Council agrees. There's, there's a lot of parks coming on.
Okay. And my biggest objection about the development are the two-story buildings because they block views and that's, that's right out. I'm, I'm the second house in from the end of Stamsen Lane and I'm on the Washington Fields Road side. So this is very, very, very close to me and I realize that you get more money selling to a commercial project and that you get more money from that developer than you do homes, but I, I'm very, very against the project.
So when you moved in six years ago, that corner piece was being used for a spook alley in the fall? It's, it's had commercial use there-
I moved in one year ago. I moved in one year ago, less than one year ago.
I've heard you and your husband say six years.
No, I commented on the six years that you were saying when this development was improved and that it went, that it was commercial. But we have only been there a few months, and this is the first we've known about it. Thank you.
All right, Liz, thank you very much. Please state your name for the record, thank you.
Sherri Tate. I just want to say to the Patel's, good job. None of us want anything out in the fields, but if we're going to do something, that's a beautiful project, and so good job. My question, Eldon, I think I heard you say something about the trails. Is the sidewalk area, is that part of the trail, or is that, did you say something when you were presenting? Is that part of the trail?
Yeah.
It'll be part of the trail? Okay, that's what I wondered.
It's part of the master plan trail system, we're putting it down this road.
Okay, that's what I...
Taking off the canal.
Okay. You knew where I was going. Okay, so anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, and thanks you guys.
Thanks, Sherri. Anybody else on this particular item? One of the other things I should add is, when I close the public hearing, you might think of something else, we'll address that after the meeting. Don't like, hey, start shouting at us during the meeting, that always doesn't end well for anybody, we don't like it, nobody can hear you, it's not on the record, gets a little crazy. So I'll ask again, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this item? Anything that you want to put on the record? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and Commissioners, I'll turn the time back over to you for staff. And if the developers here today, by any chance, if they stick close, might have some questions for them. But Commissioners, I'll turn the time back over to you.
So when they come in and do this, they'll widen the road on their side, is that correct?
Yeah, they're going to improve all that roadway you see there from the north end, even though that's not part of their Phase 1, they're still going to do all the street improvements around the whole, the whole lane.
Around their whole property, yep. So we are going to have, you know, a larger roadway there.
The street will be widened at that point, yes. And just to point out, I was just trying to help, you know, as people were speaking, just for information, Washington Fields Road, if you look over on the diagram here, is going to be 106 foot wide right of way. St. George Boulevard will be the second biggest street that we have in the city at an 85 foot wide road.
George Washington Boulevard.
Just, what did I say?
St. George.
George Washington. I can't believe I said that, I'm going to get in trouble.
Just go for her.
But those, that intersection is going to be, it'll be one of the biggest intersections in Washington City, when all said and done, so. I just wanted to point that out. And not only did we do the general plan you pointed out six years ago, but I've been here for 18 years, and the general plan before that showed this whole intersection always commercial. It's just been earmarked that way for 20 plus years in the city. I feel bad that people didn't look and see that. The zoning on this piece has been commercial for, oh, it's going to be pushing two years soon, that they got the planned unit development commercial on that. So the zoning's been in place for quite a while as well, so I'm sad that that wasn't looked at, you know, by the particular couple that owns the home here.
Even long before Southern Parkway was there, even thought of, that was zone commercial?
Yes. Yeah, they, well, in those two, those two general plans...
It was general plan commercial.
Yes, I mean.
And again, yeah, I'll just add on to that. What we did in the general plan was, we just told people, where do you want commercial in the fields? And we gave them little dots to go put on maps. And this area got flooded with dots in both of those general plans. This is where people said it should go for the future, it was just dotted, dotted, dotted heavily in both those, those public, you know, meetings and those open houses.
That's pretty impressive though, knowing, not knowing the Southern Parkway was even in existence, even somebody's thought, and that is the way that it's played out, to see.
Yeah, well, we gave them all, we just said, here's your city map of the whole fields, you know, where do you think it ought to go?
With regards to the roads, an additional question, if you could zone, if you could go out just maybe one click or two, maybe? I'm wondering where we're at with the city on the, I don't want to say the property who bought it, but on the kitty corner to the school, the green at the top of the screen that was sold, do we know where that's at for development?
In here?
Yes, right there. If that wrote, because they'll be responsible to develop their part of Washington Fields as well, correct?
Right, I think they have an approved preliminary plat, and it might be expired by now, but, oh. So this whole development right here is, yeah, construction drawings are under review right now. And they'll be building out the road on the north, and then this whole west boundary of Washington Fields Road.
So I'm kind of wondering about the possibility, in a perfect world, if we could get the whole, if this goes to city council and finds it's approved, is there any chance that that whole strip will be approved at the same time? Not likely?
No.
Probably not.
There's several other landowners in there.
The developer doesn't have to stand up and say anything if you don't want to, but if you have anything you wanted to add, please take this as your opportunity to do so. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Sam Patel, I'm the developer of this site. I guess the only comments I would have for the residents and the city and the Commissioners here today, our plan and our goal for the site is to make something that's inviting to the residents. We want to work hand in hand with the city, and we've done a really good job of working with city staff. City staff has been very, gave us very good feedback for our team to help develop the site, what it is today that's presented before you. Our, I think our number one goal is to have something that's nice in the area that will, that will change the residents' lives in a positive way. And I, we want to keep a high quality of businesses and buildings and kind of make it attractive on this. This is a very important corner, I believe, in the Washington Fields area, and we will do our best to commit to that, to make sure that we take into residents' comments, the city's comments, to make sure we do a development that's long lasting and helps the community. And then we're not here just to develop the site and walk away, we're going to be invested in this site, and we're going to hold on to it for a while. So the gas station, the car wash, 99%, we are going to operate it ourselves. And the rest of the tenants, we're going to look for local tenants that are wanting to come there and help, help small businesses come into the area. So that is our goal. If there's any questions, there'll be more than half of it.
What's your timing?
Timing, I think if we get our approvals, we are going to start construction drawings and start getting the financing and stuff in place. I don't think there'll be any issues with financing. So as fast as those two guys in the back can start drawing up construction documents and submit it to the city. And I think first, the phase, the first phase, as all the improvements are going to go in place, and that first building, the gas station, the building next to the gas station, the car wash are going to be the first buildings to go up. We are going to update our listing with NAI as far as the other buildings are concerned. We didn't start pre-leasing any of the spaces, because we want to put in our lease agreements saying, hey, this is what the city's allowed us to do as far as the building's concerned, this is a design, you, there's not much flexibility on how these buildings are going in. So we want to be able to incorporate all of that into our lease agreement.
So are you going to build the buildings, or are you going to do groundways?
We are going to build the buildings. We are going to build the buildings, but I'm hoping, we, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar, we did the Canyon Crossing project out in Ivans, we developed that site there. There, we built the buildings in gray shells, and then we had a little bit of a difficult time getting tenants to come in there to do TI improvement. So our goal is to, if we can get tenants on board first, so we can do the building and the TI improvements at the same time, I think it works out better, and the buildings are built to suit. That is our goal. If that doesn't happen, if we don't get interest in tenant spaces out there, then we'll have to make a decision whether we do gray shell buildings and then come back and do TIs later. I think, we're hoping if there's something that's on the ground, that will get some interest of getting people out there. And I know we preliminary are starting to talk to a couple people, but if they can't see it, they can't feel it, and it's hard to convince them to come.
Sam, can you talk a little bit about, let me preface this question by this, when I moved here from everybody's favorite place, Southern California, six years ago, which I still love, so, I still love Utah too, but everyone seems to have a problem with them for whatever reason. I thought, who pays to wash their car? I thought it was the weirdest thing in the world. And then all of a sudden now, that's all I do is go to the car washes, we have to, you know, same thing that you're building here. What did you guys do to, studies that were done, that your space is big enough, that there's not going to be a stacking problem throughout your project if the car wash is as busy as some of the others that we see in town?
And I believe this would be a better question for Patrick for the Rosenberg, but I believe their, the engineers have taken the site and run it through models to make sure that they have enough stacking, they have an ability for ingress, egress, they've kind of planned out and thought about some of these things, and done different, I guess, programs to run through and make sure that it doesn't turn into a nightmare on that side. So we have sufficient frontage, sufficient stacking, and then we kind of compared it to our project out in Ivans to make sure, that project, I'll give you an example, when that went through city council there, we had a lot of concerns about the project bringing a lot more traffic and a lot more things to the area, and there's not enough parking. When it was all said and done, the parking lot's never at full capacity, we're not, there's not, there's not been a traffic issue, there hasn't been any noise issues, the neighbors that are all, that were concerned about the development coming around in the area, they, after the building, everything was said and done, I don't think they had that many concerns left. So I think once this is all said and done, I think the residents in the area will see that it doesn't bring that many more people there. And we're doing traffic studies later on to kind of show this area, it'll show that, hey, there's already so many trips of people coming to the area, it's not, it's just, we're just taking away from, we're just getting them, detouring them through there. I think it'll help on traffic, people filling gas would be going into town, they'll be traveling more on roads versus their shorter trips. So there's a lot of things that will take into consideration here.
Is Phillips 66 the brand, or is that just for illustration?
No, I'm not sure if, I don't know how that made it up there, but there, it's not going to be a branded gas station, so it's going to be an independent gas station. Our goal for that, the reasoning for that would be, is to pass on the discounts that the brands take onto the residents.
It's not a car wash, it's a cow wash.
Yeah.
That was just a funny typo.
So the funny story about the cow wash is, the designers, they put it on there as a joke, and then they forgot to take it off when they sent it to the city, but everyone seems to like the name, so. The name will probably make its way to the car wash.
It is the fields still, right? So, you know, and Stady Farm has the cows at it, so I think it's, it might be a destination point, to be honest with you. It's only get little miniature cows to hand out when they go through, it might be the busiest one in the county.
Yeah, that's a question for Sherri and Mike, if they're going to take their cows there or not. Sam, like I said earlier, I really do think you guys did a grand slam, seeing this from the beginning, actually, I think I even saw a previous project to this before you, it might have been somebody before you owned it. I really like it, I think you guys did a great job. If I'm not mistaken, you're also developing Heritage Place, is that right?
Uh, no.
That's not you guys?
No, that is not us.
For some reason I thought it was, but, anyway, anything else for the applicant, Commissioners?
Yeah, I agree with you Jason, I think it's very well planned, and when it came up, I was excited about it. I live in the fields, out in that area, and I think it'll be a great, a great location for all of us that are out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioners, if there are other comments or questions, please bring it this time, otherwise I'll look for a motion on item number 4A.
Commissioners, I may just want to share some insight. There were a lot of meetings where the applicant had to pay their professionals to come and get scrubbed up by city staff. And getting scrubbed up by staff and requests is not always the funnest thing to do. This applicant kept the staying power, kept the process, and I think that one of the reasons why there's a lot of compliments is, they took the scrubs and just came back with, you know, having learned and adapted to that. And so I guess it's my way of sharing some of the process that occurred over weeks and weeks and weeks, but also results like this are part of, a part of that process.
Yeah. Drew, Eldon, same to you guys. I mean, I know this is, we should probably giving you more kudos than anybody for what you and the staff have done in getting this. And I also think in some of the meetings, I reiterate to that as well, as developers come to us, they should expect to bring something like this in the future. And if they fall short of that, then they probably should second guess it, my opinion. I need to close the public hearing, I'm not sure if I did that or not, but I, I did close it? Okay, I guess I don't need to, but I'll either open the floor back up for comments or questions or a motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. This Commissioner Bullock, I move to recommend approval of Z-23-15. A request to approve the design and use of the PUDC parcel of approximately 9.36 acres located in the northwest corner of Washington Fields Road and George Washington Boulevard, and send this to city council with the two findings and 10 conditions.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Bullock, I've got a second by Commissioner Tuppo, individual voting Mitchell. Tuppo?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Sheal?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an a as well. This motion passes, we're going to send this to city council with our recommendation for approval. That will go to city council on what date?
A week from today, which would make it the 24th.
Next Wednesday, the 24th.
Yeah.
Thank you. Again, thank you all that came to see this particular item, we appreciate it, and welcome to see you again in the future. We'll move along to item number 4B. This is also a public hearing, this is for consideration and recommendation to the city council for a zone change request, Z-23-16 from R16, open space to C3, located approximately Washington Parkway and exit 13 off of I-15. The applicant is Signal Peak Health, excuse me, Signal Peak Health Village LLC and Bush and Gudel. And I'll turn the time over to Eldon for the staff report.
Thank you Commissioners. I should speak for most of the staff, I think we're grateful that you moved from California and are our chair at this point. Commissioners, we appreciate all your efforts here.
This is a pat me on the back session all night, isn't it?
Sure.
Oh, for me to speak up, I apologize, yes. The C3 request is for the purpose of developing the property into a commercial development. This particular location has a general planned land use designation of community commercial. Community commercial supports the C3 zoning designation. The surrounding zoning to this parcel is PCD to the north, C3 to the east and south, and open space, and R16 to the west. Staff has no concern with the proposed zone change as outlined. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of Z-23-16 for the zone change request from the current R16 and open space to the proposed C3 zoning designations. And that's on to the city council and based on the findings in the staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
One of our questions, Eldon, is, the one, the medical one we just saw, we just saw two really, but, well, one that we most recently saw, is it the one right below that, below the yellow, or is it the yellow?
You mean the one you just barely saw like a week ago? No, that's down by Brio.
No, no, prior to that one.
It was, it was a zone change. No, this, the single story was on Brio and Main Street. We had another one here that had the big retention basin, I believe, but that retention basin should be down lower, correct?
Yeah, it's down in the corner here, but this is the one we did the general plan amendment on recently. So that's the only thing, they changed the general plan in this area.
That's it?
Let me go back and just...
A resident expert, Bob, is going to tell us. I feel like we saw that change something, but Bob, go ahead, yeah, please. Say your name for the record.
Bob Hermanson with Bush and Gudel, appreciate you guys' time tonight. Yeah, so we did a general plan change, and we've just basically rotated some things, if you remember. Yeah, yeah, and then, we're just doing a portion of this this evening with the CCMC in alignment with that and this other C3 surrounding zoning. We'll have additional things coming as we work on this entire pod. This just happens to be the first section that we're looking at, but we'll be chasing it with several other applications as well, just over time here.
I was going to add, this is the one, that big detention's down in this bottom here, and that was during the general plan amendment we talked about. Nothing else has been approved, we had a hospital there approved a long while ago, that's gone. I mean, it makes... I mean, it may come back, but chances are it's lost in the, somewhere out there in the universe. But, uh, so, but there is nothing else that's been approved in this particular area. We're basically talking about this, this arrow, I'm bouncing my arrow just on our, you know, on this piece. So just so you have an insight. And again, it's just the bubbled area in the blue is what's on the docket tonight. If I, that is all you're changing right now.
And then we'll be coming back with additional, you know, clarification proposals for you on different segments of this. Mainly that this north half, half or north portion of this parcel with all the details that you would normally see as we work through that.
Is there, Bob, what's the reason we can't see it like all relatively at the same time? Like is there, are they different owners or is it just completely different phases of?
So they're just, this is, uh, so there's a total of a hundred acres in this project, which is a combination of Sitla. And on the north portion of this bubbled area, Drew's got super well defined for us. Is that, that is, the, the developer also owns that, but they have a development lease for the full hundred acres plus a five acre parcel that's to the north. And so just when we, we don't have the, the plan ready for the five acre section, which is the sing-, the actual Signal Peak Health facility that will be up there, but we will have it soon. We just don't have it. We're just trying to get the zoning in place because we changed the general plan in order to even submit our, our plan. We, we have to do this first.
Does the same owner own this white piece right there?
Yes, that's all included. Again, it's Sitla, right? That's all Sitla, but a little, a small portion that's five acres to the north, but it's all the same development.
I remember the piece to the north when it came to us because we were wondering how it ended up across the road. Like it, the roads in the middle, because that piece is north, right? It's like on the other side of that road.
Um, say that again, I'm not.
When I, I, I thought, when you, when this first came to us, this is back when the hospital was going to come.
Uh huh.
There was a piece that belonged on the other side of that road to this development. And we didn't understand why it stood out there, at least I didn't. That's how I remember it. Like up in the yellow type of thing, across the road there. Was that not the case? Because that's what I thought I remembered.
So there was a really old Sitla land plan prior to Solente. And it was really dated, that incorporated all of the Sitla property and maybe those bubbles. Because it was even before Washington Parkway. I mean, you're challenging my memory, but that's like fifteen plus years ago. And it, and before the alignment of Washington Parkway was really nailed down, there were bubbles that, that executed this entire area for the land plan. And Drew could maybe back me up on that, but generally that was the case and there was a lot of overlap. And since then, obviously Solente's come in, this area's coming in, it's kind of cleaned itself up. So you're not seeing those overlaps, but I'll bet you that's what you were referring to.
Yeah, okay, maybe my memory's bad, but I, yeah, okay. Thanks, Bob, appreciate it. Commissioners, we've heard the staff report. I'll open the floor, it's already open, but any comments or questions for staff? This is also a public hearing and same rules and same thing I said earlier about the public hearing, uh, previous. We did receive one comment submitted online to this, uh, city that has gone to city council. It's come to us as planning commission and we've, uh, read that and reviewed it. And that was sent by Ralph, thank you for submitting that, very well thought out. And we appreciate your comments. That's on the record for city council to consider. If there's anybody else at this time, I'll open the public hearing and like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name, uh, for the record. If you can keep it somewhat brief, Ralph, come on up, sure. Just don't read the whole thing again. You did write it very well.
I'm not reading.
All right, good.
Thank you, thank you.
Talk loud though.
It's Ralph Bobic. I happen to live right on the corner where Tortoise Rock Road ends, the dead ends, that last pie shaped thing there. I couldn't hear, I don't hear great, but I couldn't hear much of what was going on. I heard something about the general plan was changed just recently. I heard you say six years ago, there was a general plan put in place. So I don't know what's going on with there. We bought two years ago, but we had an understanding that there'd be some kind of a medical. There was a medical project that was approved, included a hospital, maybe down closer toward the end. So it wouldn't be right in front of our face, but we don't know what's going on there. It sounds like there isn't anything existing, specific plan to go to, to that area. But my concern is that, uh, the existing open space on both of those parcels, one is not being changed for right now. But I'm wondering if it could be changed down the road. So we're not going to have any open space in that area. And so my concern is that one is if we allow this open space zoning to be changed, what's going to keep the other one from being changed? Then there won't be any open space there. As the previous homeowners have talked about different areas, we do not have any green space. I know it sounds like you know the area is much better than anybody, but I'm not aware of any park within walking distance of our property there. And I'd like to try to keep, and we would all like to keep as much open space and maybe have a park. I see three dozen cars with dogs parking at the end of Tortoise Rock every day. People go out and walk around there. Be nice to have a park and a dog, dog walk, maybe even some pickleball courts, which I put in my, in my, uh, suggestions that I sent out. But my concern is, and I have to say that today, I kind of got knocked off my chair as I was driving to the doctor. I drove by that mausoleum, um, storage building that just went up. And whoever built it was able to do what David Copperfield couldn't do. He made those beautiful red cliffs disappear. I drove by it and I looked to the right and whoever allows it to go up so high, it completely blocked any view of those beautiful red hills for that distance on the highway. And my concern is if we then allow this to go to, um, uh, C three, I wasn't aware of anywhere where I could find what the height restrictions would be. But I heard, uh, this gentleman here talk about the height be over forty feet in some of the buildings that they're going to put on the other side there by, uh, by the temple. And my concern would be that if we allow them to go up thirty some or forty some feet right across the street, we have these most beautiful gorgeous rock formations and those are going to be blocked. And if, if we have, I understand having commercial, I understand the need for it. But I would hope that everybody could also understand that we really do have some unique, features that should be preserved. And I was here four months ago and heard you be very concerned about a development that was up in the hills. And, you know, how it, uh, needed to fit in with the natural rock and environment and, you know, not interfere with it. And I went home thinking very confidently that whenever it came time for us to talk about our area here, that you would do the same. And we would just hope that you would have that same concern. If it's commercial, you can keep it lower so it doesn't get up into thirty, forty feet and block people's view of those, uh, those red cliffs. That would really be a benefit. I realize that there's probably not much we could do to keep it from being, uh, z- zone changed to C three. But I would just ask, is there any provision for green spaces that, if that existing open space that's white? Is there any thought or any plan for a park or anything to go there? Are we just waiting for the next person to come?
So the, sir, the green color you see there is all preserved forever undeveloped open space.
I'm sorry, well, I don't know where that is.
Can you see my arrow bouncing around?
Well, I see the arrow, but where's the streets?
You're in the yellow.
You don't get streets, that's what's keeping it.
I'm sorry, where's the, this property?
You'll see the interchange right there in the bottom middle.
All right, that's where we're at. So, well, you're talking about the green's going to go up beyond the cliffs on the backside of the cliffs?
Goes all the way to Pine Valley Mountains Peak.
Who's that?
It goes all the way to the peak of Pine Valley Mountain and then to the north of that.
How about a park? I'm talking about a park.
So Drew, zoom in there and show them where the, the biggest and most popular.
That's a pretty big park to me. It's not in the, the normal sense you might think, but.
Green Springs has a park up Green Springs, right?
Correct, so.
And there's a, there's a smaller park down by the freeway, the Boilers.
Yep, slow down. Let us answer your question. Slow down. So there's a, the biggest trailhead in our area that's the most popular is being developed right there as well. Drew can show you with his cursor. And then, so right in there, there's a, again, a, the trailhead exists, but it's being developed into a much bigger, much more accessible trailhead with, with park type amenities as well.
I'm sorry, I heard park what?
Park type amenities as well.
What, define the park type amenities?
You mentioned pickleball, you mentioned a place you could go and walk. That's what I'm referring to as.
Picnic area maybe covered.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, there's also an approved development up there that is required by the city council to, to build and to construct city parks within their development. So those aren't built yet, but those have also been, the city council's been very, very wary to make sure that they have to build those as they come in, so.
Okay, so then my question is, what's preventing the open space area that's not at issue today from being at issue?
So part of how we got.
Three months from now.
So part of how we got that big chunk of green open space was landowners like Sitla and the BLM also taking back the opportunity to develop other spaces. So the reason why the spot that's at application today is developable is because they gave hundreds and thousands of acres up there for, for perennial preservation. And so part of what we had is a, is a bargain, right? The bargain was they could develop their land close to the traffic corridors and they would preserve the land that would allow the most pristine, just forever preservation.
Okay, so can we expect that in the very near future, then that the remaining open space area that's going to be right across the street from where the LDS church is going to be built will also be commercial?
State law allows those landowners to come and ask for it. The city doesn't, won't commence those processes. But yeah, I think that in the nature of where you're living nearby an interchange, I think those landowners are likely to bring those type of applications in the future.
It'll be just a wall of businesses all along Washington Parkway.
Tonight's is, is about healthcare. It would be whatever they, they propose and get approved.
Is there any height restrictions?
We have height restrictions, yes.
What are they? We, I looked online and I had a.
Forty-five feet in commercial, forty-two feet in multifamily, and that's what you will see in there.
Multifamily?
Multifamily, could be apartments, townhomes.
Is that the same as commercial?
No, it's not the same as commercial.
So it'd be, all right.
I was telling the zoning, the zoning they have here, or their, their general plan, not that they have here, that they'll be coming back for. This brown area, they're going to do mixed use in here. We don't know what that is yet. They don't know what it is yet. They have to wait until to see what the market demands. But you could see anywhere from apartments to townhomes.
All along that brown.
That brown area directly across the street from you.
From Buena Vista all the way to Washington Parkway?
Yes.
Got it.
Because it used to be medium high density. It went, it went east, west. They came and made it go north, south instead when they changed that, okay? The medium high density used to go this direction. So a sudden, they just came back and asked for PUD to go north and south all along Tortoise Rock Drive.
And the height, they could go up three, four stories on apartments?
They'll have to come back for a PUD like that thing you just saw here in front of this one. They got to bring a plan back that shows that everything what they'll have.
Right, but that zoning allows for up to what?
If it's commercial, they could do forty-five. If it's residential, it'll be forty-two. That's the possibility they could go.
Forty-two, is that three stories?
Yes.
Got it, okay. Thank you all very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ralph. Anybody else like to speak to this particular item tonight? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And commissioners, I'll turn the floor back over to you for questions or comments.
Drew, that white section that's right there that says open space, shouldn't that read as undetermined at this point instead of open space with our new regulation, with our new?
Well, it won't matter because it's what's in the general plan.
I know, but it, where it says that.
It's only in the general plan where we do the not yet determined. We don't do it in the zoning.
But it says open space in the zoning.
That's because it's zoned right now, open space. It was just earmarked to be, like we've talked about in the past, well, that's why we got rid of the open space. People couldn't comprehend that a lot of cities just turn a lot of property open space because they're not sure what it's going to be.
Right, but what I'm saying though is if, if this, in theory, this, instead of open space.
That white space is going to be planned unit development.
Planned unit development, we changed it.
In the general plan.
Three weeks ago or so.
That's why I won't come back. They'll just, they'll come back and show their PUD. We gave that the general plan, so we know they're going to bring you a PUD. And so that yellow area right below the white, and that will be either residential or it's going to be mixed use, commercial and residential.
And we don't know that.
We, and they don't even know that yet. They're still out there, you know, working what, what might go. They're focusing on the medical side of things right now. And that's why this piece you probably, if they're doing this, there must be stuff that's coming down the pipeline.
So on the general plan, it's listed as not yet determined?
No, not in this area.
Not in this area, okay.
Yeah, here, I'll show you, let's just go back so you understand what I was talking about. I have a not yet determined up here, but that's part of the Solente, right? Not yet determined over here by the reserve. But you can see the church is going right here that we did the condition use permit on. This will be planned unit development residential or commercial. We'll wait till they bring it in. This is going to be, this is what they're changing right now to C three. This is already C three. And so it, it is down here, but they're going to come change that. So there is no not yet determined that affects. And right now, because you have that master plan community to the north, the not yet determined really doesn't have any bearing on any of this property around these for a good half mile, every direction to a mile.
So will they do the feathering, you know, from residential and then to?
Staff will be guiding them in that direction for the most part, yes. So with the subdivision Perry Landing that's over there on the west of the Turtle Rock, we're going to tell them, you're going to come back with something that's probably residential in nature on the east side, just because we don't want to throw commercial over there like that. You know, the commercial may be more up north on that opposite the church if they go that route. Again, they're not sure what it's going to be. The detention pond's going to stay no matter what. It'll just be dressed up to look probably more appropriate, so.
Thanks Drew, Dad, thank you as well. Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this particular item? And if, if not, if you have them, please state them. If you don't, let's, I'll look for a motion on item four B.
This is Sheil, I'll make a motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of Z dash two-three dash one-six for the zone change request from the current R dash one dash six and OS to a proposed C three zoning designation. And send that word to the city council for their, uh, finding or for their, uh, vote to include the two findings.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
Got it first by Commissioner Sheil, I've got a second by Commissioner Tuppo. Individual voting Mitchell?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
I'm Hanson, I'm an a as well. We will send this motion to city council with our recommendation for approval. Will that also be heard next week?
Yes, next week.
Next Wednesday at six PM?
Six PM, they start their meeting, yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you all for coming and getting your comments on the record for that as well. We'll go ahead and move to item number five A. This is also a public hearing. This is for consideration and recommendation to the city council for Riverbend Phase One amended final plat, located approximately Fort Creek Drive and Country Way. The applicant is S and S Homes, and I'll turn the time over to Eldon for his report.
Purpose of this amendment is to increase the lot size of lots two, thirty-seven, forty-three, fifty and sixty-two. Currently, these lots are approximately four to five thousand square feet in size. City code requires lots to be sized six thousand square feet in order to have an internal accessory dwelling unit. This amendment would allow these lots to have an internal accessory dwelling unit. As shown in the exhibit, limited common area that is exclusive to the property owner is being changed to private element to meet the minimum lot size requirement. Staff has reviewed the, the proposed amended final plat and finds it conforms to the PUDR zoning of this development. The subdivision also remains in compliance with the subdivision ordinance of the city. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the amended final plat for the Sunrise Valley Phase One subdivision. That's on to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the conditions in the report. That's on to the city council based on the following findings and subject to the conditions in the report. Just to reiterate, in short, they're increasing the lot sizes to accommodate an internal accessory dwelling unit.
That's attached to the primary residence, right?
It would need to be attached, yeah. To do detached, lot sizes need to be 10,000 square feet.
What, where did they get the extra property? What other ones shrunk?
Common area. Or limited.
What's that?
It was the common or limited, limited common area. You can see how, see how they come out to the street where the other ones don't. Let's just, I'm going to zoom in here. They have to be a minimum 6,000. That was the state law that was passed for IADU's internal accessory dwelling units. And these were, you can see, most of them were 42.5, 43. They didn't meet the minimum, but they got built and it didn't get caught. Then they brought one in and it did get caught. So we're coming back. Fix, luckily, we were able to do this and give them the minimum, you know, square footage they needed to fall within our city ordinance and fall within state law. So that's what we're doing is cleaning something up here. Um, again.
It keeps the same setbacks, right?
Yeah, nothing's really changed. They, you know, this was the private ownership. You know, I'm going to show 44, and the private ownership was 44.55. That's 1,500 sque, 1,500 square feet shy of the minimum. So what we did was went out and extended all the way to the public road, this area. You can see, and then some of them even, we had to go into the backyard area and make that part of the private ownership to give them the 6,000 square foot lot to meet the minimum standard.
So what if, what if something happens to the sidewalk or whatever? Is that homeowner responsible for it?
No, that, nothing changes on that because this is still the public right of way out here. Deep Creek Drive is still a 50-foot in the sidewalks inside of that already.
Okay, okay.
This was just their driveway area, 20 feet. That was a setback they had to be, right? Um, and so we just took those lines straight out to the street, took them out of common or limited common area, turned them into private ownership. They get their 6,000 square feet, meets our minimum. They can get their internal accessory dwelling unit.
If I was driving down this neighborhood street.
You would not notice a difference.
You wouldn't notice anything, correct?
No. And the way they treat limited common area around these parts, it's yours anyway. Even, I don't know why they put it in limited common area. I've always said, just make it part of the ownership.
Yeah, I don't understand the limited common area, common area, I guess. I don't understand the point of it.
It was a neat little tool somebody came up with years ago so that if, you know, because I'm going to give you an example, say Lot 44. If that wasn't limited common area, it was just regular common area and there was a driveway on it, some Weisenheimer could come up and park in your driveway. You couldn't tell them to get out because they're saying it's common area. That's owned by all of us, right? And so to keep those kind of people that were pushing those buttons like that, then they came up with this limited common area, which it's attached to your property means it's for your use, even though it's in the common area. And I just said, why not just make it part of your ownership? But I wasn't back here when somebody, you know, came up with the limited common area thing. I mean, it has its place in certain areas, but the way it's being utilized and used and abused, I say I just start pushing people to say, forget a limited common area, let's just have common area and private ownership. And that's in essence, what we're doing here is just giving them private ownership.
Yeah, we have applicants wanting to build, you know, pools in limited common area, and it's again, a pool that would be exclusive just to that unit, right? And so it's an ongoing struggle. I don't know that we've got our final solution to how we want to manage that, but it's a struggle. And Drew, what's a Weisenheimer?
I immediately looked at like.
Is that a dog breed?
Oh, you, you, you know those people in school that just come to push people's buttons?
Okay.
We all had someone, right? Everybody knows somebody that they went to high school with. It was that kid that just liked to just, you know.
We had one last meeting. You missed him.
There you go. That's a Weisenheimer.
The, I'm just, I'm just, I, I don't understand why it was even. It, it, it looks like, it doesn't make sense to me, first of all, I guess. I mean, it looks like it's a, a tool that would allow you to have open area so you could get smaller units and by saying you have more open area, it's kind of like the way that those half acres that we did out on the Washington Dam Road that we felt like we all got burned on. Yeah, you're, you're exactly right. So, so the, the original developer wants to get more units, and so they make a lot of what would traditionally just be the yard or the curtilage of the residence into limited common area, and then they get to count that as, you know, common space or open, open space or, you know, undeveloped space. And then they write their CCNRs, and this is where the legal battle's happening. Then they write their CCNRs to say you can build a pool or a deck or a, or an accessory shed in your limited common area, and staff and legal think that common area, if it, even if it is limited, should have common uses, but what they're doing is writing within their CCNRs and their, and their used their, their, their neighborhood covenants that allows the unit owner to have exclusive use of the common area, which kind of runs afoul of the initial density calculation and the way that they got kind of more density because of those spaces.
So your thought in that is exactly what I said. All of a sudden, we're just, it's a way to get where the, right now, our smallest lot in the city is 6,000 square foot. A lot of them are utilizing this, and the essence, what they're getting is 4,500 square foot lots. Right? That, that's what they're doing is just getting these, these parcels that we normally don't have. And again, we went through the PUD process to make sure that then we had these open spaces around where people weren't doing like everybody lives in a regular subdivision where their neighbor puts a bunch of, you know, accessory structures in the backyard and encroaches on that, and that's fine, you know, that's straight zoning, but now all they're doing is just getting everything they want in smaller, smaller lots and circumventing that. So I'd rather just go back and talk. Maybe that's a discussion we'll have with the planning commission, city council. Just allow for it to create smaller lots there. Now that we're growing the size we are, I've been in cities that are certain sizes. You can have a 5,000 square foot lot or a 4,500 square foot lot. You might as well start considering that instead of doing this.
And increased density is one of the ideas that's circulated around the state to help with housing availability.
So, but you're right on. That's exactly what's happening. And the limited common area is just pushing that even to that because it, it, you know, I can't go on your limited common area. I'm not allowed to, nor you on mine if I live in this development. So what I like about this is now it's private ownership all the way out to the street and part of that backyard.
But by doing this, does it change what we, what was approved as far as densities now, where we're having to change a few of these? Or it does that?
No, because the state law went and changed, made every home a duplex possibly, right? When they passed that law that allowed any home to have an internal accessory dwelling unit in it, it basically by state mandate just turned every, every home could be a possible duplex in some form. Not equal duplex, but it's still two residences in, in one home, so. Well, shall I give you my smart out? I'm going to be my Weisenheimer wherever they want to put them. That's what's, I'm not claiming, I'm not saying this particular one, but throughout the city, I've got some of them that do this and I've, they're making fences, blocking off, making back, you know, private backyards in common area. So we, we have a little bit, that and I've had this discussion. And, you know, we do have some things we're really going to have to look at in the future of how some of them are going to zero property lines, but it was never intended to be that by where they're putting fences and gates in these planned unit developments. And again, I'm not saying, I'm not picking this one. Don't think that this, but it's just an issue that we have all over the city. Because that 10-foot area you see between the homes is the minimum. A lot of them are coming back and putting a, a block wall, you know, partway down the back and making backyards with gates going into each one, a three-foot gate in there with, and it's, and it's not really common area anymore. It's not. It's when you block it off with a gate, it's not common, so.
You said something important to me, at least, is that when you drive down the street, you're not going to know the difference from house to house.
Yeah, you, when you go for, you know, Lot 42, 3, and 4, they're going to look like all the rest of it, you know, the ones that don't, that aren't extended, you won't know the difference. Got all.
Alright. Commissioners, any additional questions for staff before I open this to a public hearing? Alright, I'll open this to the public hearing portion of the meeting. If anybody would like to speak to this item, please come forward and state your name for the record. And it looks like no takers. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor back up to commissioners for additional comments. And/or a motion if we're ready for that.
Well, the next, the next, the next three are identical, it looks to me like. Can we, can we just make a motion for all three and go down the road?
Unfortunately, because when you're amending a plat, you got to hold a public hearing, or else you have everybody in the plat, sign the plat.
Oh, okay.
So that's why we need to have all public hearings separated for it.
Thanks.
Just so we can show that each one had its own independent public hearing.
I'll second it if you make it.
What an offer, yeah. You better shoe, shoe big here.
Uh, I make a motion for final plat approval for the Riverbend at Sunrise Valley Phase 1. Amended subdivision located approximately Fort Creek Drive and Deep Creek Drive. Send it to city council for approval with the three findings and five conditions on the staff report.
This is Sheel. I'll second. We've got a motion by Commissioner Tuppo, second by Commissioner Sheel. Individual voting, Mitchell?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Sheel?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well. This motion passes. We'll send it to city council. Item 5A, and we'll go to item number 5B. This is also a public hearing for consideration and recommendation, city council for Riverbed Phase 2 amended final plat located approximately Country Way and Bear Trap Canyon Drive. The applicant is S&amp;S Homes, and I'll turn the time over to Eldon for the report.
Thanks, commissioners. The purpose of this amendment is to increase the lot sizes of lots 30, 32, 70, 78, 84 through 87, 97, and 102. And again, that's to meet the 6,000 square foot requirement for the internal accessory dwelling units. Staff has no concerns with this. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
I, I probably should have asked this last time. This doesn't allow it to be vacation rentals, nightly rental, correct? That's what I thought.
Good thinking. What is the lot size that the city mandates, or I guess state even, to have an external accessory dwelling unit?
10,000.
Okay. So this is not applicable to that either?
Yeah, they wouldn't fit. There's no room to put any, anything like that.
Alright. Thanks, Eldon. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing portion. If there's anybody like to speak to this item, please come forward. Well, Ben, I thought I had to take her. You, you fooled me there. Um, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and I'll turn the time back over to commissioners for any questions or emotion.
This is Sheel. I would move that we recommend as a planning commission approval of the amended final plat for Sunrise Valley Phase 1 subdivision. Send it to the city council for their discovery.
Phase 2.
Phase 2.
Phase 2?
Yeah, you mentioned one, phase 2.
Oh, sorry. Uh, with the three findings and the five conditions.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I'll second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Sheel, second by Bullock. Individual voting, Mitchell?
Aye.
Tuppo?
Aye.
Bullock?
Sheel?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well. Motion passes. We'll send that to city council as well. Item number 5C, this is a public hearing for consideration as well on recommendation to city council for Riverbed Phase 3. Uh, amended final plat located approximately Washington Fields Road in 2,000 South. The applicant is S&amp;S Homes. Take it away, Eldon.
Purpose of this amendment is to amend lots 5 through 26, 55, 57, 59, 74, 77, 91 through 93, 104, and 106 through 113. And just as before, it's to increase the size to 6,000 square feet to accommodate the IADU. Staff has no concerns with this, and the development will remain with the city standards. And I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are they all pretty much the same size, or is this a bigger development?
The lot sizes?
No, the lot numbers. Number of lots per development.
Oh, per phase?
Per phase.
Yeah, it varies. Yeah, I think this was.
This looked like it might, might be a little bigger.
Correct, yeah.
Is there the potential of more of these coming forward, or? I'm just curious. They're changing a few lots. Why not change it a lot at all?
Bob Hermanson pushing schedule. Um, so on these phases, we think that we're just kind of handling all of these for this project in this, in this area. Could you see these in other ones? Yeah, with the new code, the way that it is with an accessory unit, if you're in a PD scenario. Yeah, you probably could so that you could still, you can still build a home in that 4,500 square, square foot footprint that could utilize that. But the, the zoning may not allow it because of that lot size, so this will be done, but I bet you'll start seeing more, yeah, come through for sure.
Yeah, what happened? This, this floor plan came from Vegas. Somebody brought it, you know, and said, hey, there's this thing over in Vegas that's really catching on. You know, so they thought about it, but didn't think it all the way through to, you know, check everything, and I'm not blaming them in any way. But then it caught on fire. They thought, no, this won't happen. They put one out there and all of a sudden, next thing they know, everybody's wanting to buy that one. So hopefully this will catch up with all the ones that, you know, that are buying that floor plan. It's got that built-in accessory dwelling unit, so.
Is it off the front of the house, or is it off the side or back, or?
I'm not sure. Bob, do you know where it's at? Kind of, is it?
Yeah, they're, they're off the side, off the side. Yeah, just so it has a side, small side entry where you just come off the side. That way the primary can still basically live normally.
Is this like a one-bedroom thing with?
Yep, just a small one-bedroom, yep.
So the short answer is you may see it come back, but we're hoping that you don't, but it all depends on how the market goes.
I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. If there's anybody like to speak to this item. I'm going to close the public hearing and turn the time back over to commissioners for either a motion or any other questions.
This is Commissioner Bullock. I move to the planning commission recommend approval for the final plat amendment of the Riverbend at Sunrise Valley Phase 3, amended subdivision located approximately Smith Creek Drive and Deep Creek Drive.
Three findings?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Three, the three findings and the five conditions.
This is Sheel. I second. Got a commissioner by Commissioner Bullock. I'm sorry, I have a I just drew a blank. Motion, there we go. I have a motion by Commissioner Bullock and a second by Commissioner Sheel. Individual voting, Mitchell? Tuppo?
Aye.
Bullock?
Aye.
Sheel?
Aye.
I'm Hanson. I'm an aye as well. Uh, motion passes, excuse me, motion passes. Send that to city council. And commissioners, is there anything else at this time that needs to be brought before this particular body at this time, or staff for that matter?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
This is Mitchell. I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Is that okay? It is.
Recording stopped.